Good morning. I will call the order, the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for January 22.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
President.
Commissioner Howard?
President.
Chair Weymeyer?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
If you would please stand in joint agreement for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation led by Pastor Todd Miller of Cherry Street Wesleyan Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as usual, it is an absolute honor to be here with you guys, the great leaders of this awesome county, and it's an honor to be asked to invite the Holy Spirit to be amongst you and to guide you. I also want to pray for some safe travels out there. The roads are a little slick. All of our county workers out there trying to do a good job on our roads, and so we want to pray for them also. So would you please join me? Heavenly Father, we do thank you, I thank you, that I'm part of a county that has leaders like these, that seek you, seek your guidance, your counsel, and the decisions that they will be making on the behalf of the people of this county. Guide them, speak to their hearts, and help them, help them to lead this county, continue to lead this county forward in a way that brings prosperity to the county, but also brings glory and honor to you. And with this storm coming through, God, keep our, all the workers, the road crews, and everybody out there trying to make it safe for us, the people of this county, keep them safe. I pray a hedge of protection around each and every one of them. May they get their jobs done, and may they find you and see you in all that they're doing today and throughout this week. God, we love you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're just to correspondence and organizational business, which will be to receive an update from the Franklin County Conservation District.
Good morning. So I'm going to, instead of giving you just a quarterly update, kind of a year in review wrap-up for 2019, and of course tomorrow is our 2020 annual meeting. We have close to 100 reservations, which we've switched to a noon meeting, gosh, probably eight or nine years ago, I think, and we've had a consistent 100 attendees every year. So those of you that are able to make it tomorrow will hear some of the same information, but wanted to share it today as well. Of course, we annual, we annually honor our Bankers' Award recipients, and for 2019, that was SF Farms, which is Sherry Froggett and Jody White and her family, Joe and Judith Maloney, and Bicklemeier Land and Cattle. Bicklemeier Land and Cattle went on to receive a nomination for our State Grassland Award also. Unfortunately, across the state, they recognized someone else, but Bicklemyers were at least nominated thanks to our local award that they received last January. We purchased a new drill last winter, and it's covered just over 200 acres, and we ordered out $10,000 worth of custom seed orders this last year, which was quite a bit. The weather certainly was a little uncertain and wet, and I was surprised when we totaled things up that we had sold that much seed. Of course, we continue to work with the Butterfly Projects and do some seed packets specifically for pollinators. We had nearly 100 applications from Franklin County landowners for voluntary conservation practices to be implemented through various programs that we administer at the office. Of course, we have the two state-funded, which is the Nonpoint Source Pollution Control Program and the Water Resources Cost Share Program. And then we also assist with the federal programs through the Farm Bill, Equip, CSP. We do a little bit of CRP work also. So 100 applications with a staff of two. Unfortunately, last December, a year ago, December of '18, our lead NRCS person took another job and left, and so for the entire calendar year of 2019, Kent, our field technician, and myself were the only two in the office to handle all of that work. We saw Jeff from the county quite a bit on road issues. We saw Davidson on road issues, and just trying to make the best, just like you guys are, with the roads and the erosion and everything. But lots of calls, lots of interest. Everybody wants to get something fixed today, and the weather doesn't seem to cooperate. So we're trying our best. We do think we'll have new staff on the federal side, maybe sometime in February, finally. So I am very grateful to have that. Have continued to put in long hours to serve the public because I don't want them to not get the service that they've come in for, and if I'm able to assist NRCS with that, that's truly why we're there, to get conservation on the ground. So our programs have just had tremendous response. Lots of work to be done, little bit of work that got done in the dry spells here this winter before the weather tended to set in. We recorded nearly 450 hours of volunteer service, just short of $12,000, which for us, with the operating budget that we have, that's a tremendous help for us. A lot of that comes in, this year it came in through just office administrative help with some filing, and then our educational and outreach programs that we do, we rely on volunteers quite a bit for that. We hosted the 15th Annual Earth Day for 162 middle school students here in Franklin County. We presented soil lessons to 360 elementary students, presented the Soil Tunnel Trailer to nearly 500 attendees a day on the farm, and an additional 565 students in one day at Johnson County's Slice of Ag. They asked that I come up and present there. We also did water cycle lessons, recycling lessons, and helped with some stream sampling up at Hillsdale Lake. We co-hosted a Soil Health Workshop. Unfortunately, it was in July, and we only had 25 attendees, but we were grateful for the 25 that we had. Our Facebook page continues to be a very useful source of information for us. We don't, I don't know, we have 356 followers, which to me doesn't seem like a lot compared to some organizations, but for the entity that we are, I think that's great. The impressive thing was we reached over 51,000 with our posts in 2019. So I think that continues to be a good source of information for us. Over 700 acres worth of cover crops were seeded in Franklin County in 2019. Some of that was through the Flood Recovery Initiative. Last spring, producers that were unable to plant their planned commodity crop were able to take an incentive payment to come in and do some cover crops to keep a growing root in that soil, even though it might not have been the corner soy room that they had planned on. They were still able to improve the soil health with those cover crops. We did 120 soil tests through K-State at just over $1,000. We represented Franklin County by having Conservation District officials attend Kansas Water Office meetings, the Regional Advisory Committee meetings, Casey, which is the State Association for Conservation and Environmental Education. We hosted a local work group meeting. We went to KACD, which is our Conservation District Association, KDHE, RAPS, Kansas Department of Ag, USDA, and of course, County Commission meetings. So it was a busy year. Probably the big highlight for us, that we were awarded $130,000 in technical assistance grants through the National Association of Conservation Districts and Lando Lakes through their Sustain program. Producers may know that program as True Terra. We're working directly with local ag retailers here in Ottawa, specifically Ottawa Co-op. They are the Sustain and True Terra provider for the local farmers, and so we're trying to provide that piece to connect what the farmers are already doing on their ground with Co-op or other ag retailers, and connect it to the incentive payments that we have available through the Farm Bill and our state cost share programs. So that project just started in November. We hired an agronomist and have gotten things started there. And then, of course, we still have our website that is useful. There's a lot of information that we cannot post in the federal building as far as like our contractors list and stuff, so we do maintain our website and keep it up to date with information. And then we had a burn workshop last March, had 51 attendees out at Celebration Hall. We worked with Franklin County Emergency Management, K-State Research and Extension, and NRCS on that. We just recently published a newsletter that went out to our Franklin County listserv and included information on the new burn permit process in there, and I also have handouts on that for tomorrow at our annual meeting. We have 25 contract holders for federal CRP contracts that are expected to do a burn this spring, and we've printed the cards that Alan gave me, and all of those CRP holders will receive that new information, reminding them of their burn. And then, of course, conservation compliance is another big thing that we focus on, and assisted both FSA and NRCS with that process, making sure that farm fields have determinations and everybody has conservation plans and so forth. So that is a brief wrap-up of what was a very busy year, like I said, with staff of two. But we appreciate everything that you guys continue to do, and just the support that we get, and the support from the landowners. We're very lucky here in Franklin County. We've got some great producers out there that are trying their best with the weather and really just in it for the conservation of the land. So that's what I have. If you have any questions, after we wrap up annual meeting tomorrow, I'll get started working on our budget request, and certainly I've been emailing the commissioners and staff our monthly board meeting minutes that has pretty detailed reports of day-to-day type interactions with the landowners. But as you looked through those, if there was anything that stood out, or something specific you'd like to see as we move forward with that budget process, certainly let me know, and we'll try to get that information to you. So, thank you, and stay careful.
See you tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Carrie, where's the day on the farm going to be next year?
I have not heard. Sean Turner had invited me to the planning meeting, and unfortunately, it was at the same time that I had another meeting, and I've not received any follow-up on that. I, that's all I know at this point.
Appreciate you spreading the word about the third ban and the new policy.
Yeah, no problem. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a public comment. Brings us to our public comment portion of the agenda. Citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss item at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regards to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Warren Woods?
I'd like to bring to attention of the commissioners some issues we've been having on our road, and those issues have been reported in the last couple of months, but they haven't been addressed. And the road is Virginia Terrace, south of John Brown, and approximately two and a half miles south there, there are some bridge embuckments that have been washed out on the ends where a car can drive into those and get slammed into the bridge embuckment. Also, in the same area where Finney Road meets Virginia Terrace, the culvert on Finney Road has been blocked for several months, or actually, maybe years, and the water comes out into Virginia Terrace and causes ruts at that location, and it seems to be an ongoing problem, and that is another issue there. And also, further up the road, just south of John Brown, we've had a war shot up there which diminished the road width by at least four foot, and it hasn't been corrected. That was caused by a ditch that wasn't properly cleaned, where a waterway from a field comes into that ditch, and there was so much water the spring came down into that area, that it just came out into the road and had no way of getting into that ditch. Also, I noticed in the last couple of years, our operator of the grader has been pulling gravel to the side of the road, causing a berm anywhere from four to six, eight inches high, where this does not allow the water to leave the road and causes ruts in that area. And our road slopes from John Brown clear down to John Brown Drive. So that's probably approximately three-quarters of a mile where this wash is happening in that area. Also, on Virginia Road, north of John Brown, I noticed last year they did extensive road work in that area. Maybe not road work, but they put a lot of gravel in there, and right after they put that gravel in, we had a good spring rain, and most of the work they'd done got washed away. Because the ditches was not cleaned out, and the culverts were not cleaned out, and the water had no place to go, and in that particular road, the berm that caused by the grader was even 10 inches high. I drove down that road after that rain, and there was more water in the road than there was in the ditches. That's a waste of our taxpayers' money. All that gravel just being washed away in those areas, and I don't know if the operators even putting a crown on the road in some of our areas on Virginia Terrace. Now, I don't know about other roads in our county, but I know we've had some, an operator that maybe knew, I don't know that for a fact, but it seems something has changed, either the operators changed, or the way they're grading the roads have changed. And based on what I can find under the Federal Highway Administration and Gravel Road Construction and Maintenance, that berm they're putting on the side of the road should not be there. Now, if they're doing something different, and that's something I don't know about, I'd like to find out what it is. The other things I'd like to find out is, can people request that the grader not come down their road? Because it's, in the past, our road has been real nice, and then it seemed like the grader comes along and he disturbs the road, and he causes dust issues, and he takes away the crust of the road and just causes more problems with that, it seems to me, than he does fixing the problems. If the people on the road can request that they not come as often as they do because of the road condition being better than other roads, then I think that would be maybe some possible ways to save money in the future. Also, on Virginia Terrace at John Brown intersection, when they, the last time they chip and seal John Brown, they took out, dug out a couple of potholes there on that area, and they never did fill them back up. We thought they was going to fill them in with asphalt or chip and seal or something. But those continue to be a problem. As you enter John Brown going east, you have to pull out the oncoming lane slow, and if anybody's coming from the west going east, they pop up over that hill, and that hill's only about 100 yards away, and the sight distance is not very good. So you're pulling out slow onto John Brown, and traffic is coming over that hill and causing, may cause an accident. But they haven't fixed those huge potholes since they've done John Brown. Excuse me. Anyway, the main thing that I was concerned about was the way they bermed this extra gravel on the side of the road where the water cannot get off of that road, and that's conducive to the way the road should be bladed. And I don't know if they're even putting a crown on the road anymore, on my road, in some places. That's about all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to our consent agenda, which today would include considering approving minutes from our January 15th and January 13th meetings, tax change orders in the amount of $1,333.38. They're motion to approve the consent agenda.
Take the motion.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
I see the fourth item. It's not on my cheat sheet, approved solicitation of bids for culverts and bridge, and culverts for road and bridge and chemicals for noxious weeds, doesn't matter. Would anybody like to approve approving solicitation for?
I would, I would make a motion to include the solicitation for bids for culverts.
That wasn't on your consent agenda?
Oh, it wasn't on mine. No, it's not her fault. I should have looked up, but we can do it a separate one. It makes no difference.
I have one quick question, being on that right before we do that. Are we, we've had some questions from out of my area, and you were going to do some checking. Are the local small towns able to purchase culverts from us at our cost? Did you find that out?
That is something that hasn't been done in the past, but since I've taken over, it seems to me that we should, we should partner with the smaller communities whenever possible. It's not costing us any extra money to do that, so we are, we've sold a few, not many.
That's all I have.
All right, I have a second from Commissioner, or a motion from Commissioner Dickinson to approve soliciting bids for culverts for road and bridge and chemicals for noxious weeds. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Would you make it?
He's the one.
Whoever, put somebody in.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to our items business. There is one item of business, which is, first of which is a rezoning application. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. As you've indicated, the first item of business this morning will be the consideration of a rezoning of approximately five and a half acres. This matter was heard by the Planning Commission in their meeting in October. It's taken this long to get the survey with the legal description so we can get this matter finalized. The five acres that they're separating from the 80-acre tract of land contains residents and some outbuildings. I think it's shown on the survey, that's attached as a part of your staff report. The five acres does meet all of the requirements of our comprehensive plan and zoning regulations, and the Planning Commission unanimously approved this matter and forwarded to you for approval to rezone approximately five and a half acres from an A1 to an RE, residential estate zoning district. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have a question.
Larry, when they redo these and resurvey, and do they survey the 80 acres then, too, at the same time?
Typically not. The cost for that would be substantial to go out and survey the whole boundary of the 80 acres. There is a legal description on record, and they utilize that legal description in assisting them with the five acre description that will be the result of the rezoning, if the rezoning is approved.
Just subtract that acres from the 80.
Yes. They do have a good legal description then for the five and a half acres, or whatever that acreage happens to be that's within the boundaries of the survey. Our regulations are set up so that if the tracts are less than 40 acres, that would, we would require that they include everything within the survey, but if it's over 40 acres, 40 acres or more, they are exempt from having to survey it.
All right, any other questions for Larry? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the rezoning application? I have the motion to approve the application. All right, is there a second?
Second. Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thanks, Larry.
Brings us to staff reports.
You all may recall that we appoint someone to the Fourth District Judicial Nominating Commission. So that commission exists to nominate candidates for judges in this county, and helps, they help seat judges in this county. Randy Renaud has been the county's member, obviously. He's no longer here. In any event, that term is coming up, and we need to appoint someone to serve a term from March 2020 to March 2024. You know, four years is a long time. That being said, I'm not convinced that there will be any nominating that needs to be done in that four-year period. Nevertheless, ideally, one of you would volunteer to sit on that commission, so I would gladly do it, but it has to be a non-lawyer member. So if one of you would like to do that, certainly we would put your name in, so.
I think Commissioner Renaud only had to go one time. Like Derek said, there's, unless we have a judicial vacancy.
May not go at all.
Yeah.
Who would be willing to do it?
Thank you, Derek.
Need a motion for that?
No, we don't. If I Ann is willing, and no one wants to challenge her for that, then I will gladly make sure that she's seated.
All right.
You got it.
That's all I have today.
All right. Casey?
I don't have.
All right. Larry, anything to add? Paul, would you like to add anything from HCDC?
Just say that we're excited today. We've had the workforce development meeting with educators, Dr. Crouch and myself, and we're going to do that with industry.
I would like to, Carrie, you know, she mentioned that we utilize their resources quite often. I just want to confirm that, that they are great partners with us. We use them to assist us with drainage issues, communication with area farmers, and they occasionally will help us size culverts. And so they are a wonderful resource, and we lean on them on a regular basis. Our folks, we started pre-treating all of our bridges yesterday in anticipation of this weather event, and we've got folks out now treating the roads. We'll evaluate the conditions throughout the day, and we'll decide later this afternoon if we're going to need to have the night shift work. We're ready for that if that's necessary, but we'll continue evaluating the conditions. Kind of between weather events, we've, it seems like we've had them three weeks in a row now, and as we saw last year, that pattern seems to continue. So our folks have been burning brush piles. We've retrieved rock from ditches in a couple of our blade districts, and then we, the CND landfill, we had just capped that a few weeks ago, and all of the moisture has really made that slick up there, so we added some rock up on the CND landfill so that folks could still utilize that. And then we had a hole next to a box culvert in the 600 block of Nebraska that we, that we filled in. The other thing that I'll say, the Fuel Island, after a year and a couple of months, is now operational. So that's, that's a good thing. The public comments, a little bit, I will be going out and taking a look at those. You know, I don't know the circumstances behind all of these, but you know, I will say that we processed over 3,300 work orders last year, which is about three times as many as we ordinarily do. Just over 100 of those, we had to roll over, so it's, it's possible that some of these items have been reported and are in areas that are still yet to come. But I'll be going out and taking a look at those and see if we can rectify the situations.
Janet, from your office, that brings us to Commissioners' comments and Board reports. Let's have one comment. David, on the, I mean, it was common practice in the past of having excess gravel bermed on the side of the road. It was common.
It was common. As they did the blade work monthly, they would move it from one side to the other, and it was kind of a storage area for gravel, and I guess new practices don't have that kind of practice as, as common practice.
There's a couple of reasons for that. One, our heavily traveled roads, we should be putting close to 1,000 tons of gravel per mile to keep up with the material that is crushed by vehicular traffic, pushed to the sides, those sorts of things. We're not putting anywhere near that much on our county roads, we can't afford to. The other reason, when we add rock to a road, we do stockpile, brand-new gravel, we do stockpile some on the edge because that gravel gets beat down in traffic, and the next time that we come through there to maintain it, we use that excess to, again, cover what we just put down to solidify that road. This year, as you all know, we had flood after flood after flood. There were numerous times where our folks created some quite large windrows on the sides where they were trying to pull material out of those low areas that were holding water, to dry it out, to be able to reuse it, and then it would rain again. And so, one of the things that I've, I've asked our folks to do is to cut a trough periodically in those windrows so that the water can get to the ditch. I'm not going to say that that was widely used. I know that it was here and there, and I think in those situations, it worked out just like we suspected it would. Going forward, we are trying to look at new practices so that, to minimize the size of the windrows, but they do serve a purpose. Again, just like you mentioned, whenever we go through, we push that rock back over to the other side, and it helps fill in potholes and those sorts of things on our road systems.
I think a lot of the issue is, on some of them's are ditches, you know, until we are able to go in and cut all the way to the ditch, the years have gone by and the ditches have built up on the outside next to the road, and instead of having to cut flat part to the ditch, now it's, it's windrode up and until we're able to go in and, which will take a long time to do with the amount of people we have in this, until we're able to cut the ditches like they need to be, then we're gonna have some issues with this.
All of those things are, are items that discussed on a regular basis. We are looking at additional, additional, not additional people, but assigning folks to specifically tackle that. We continue, just like I mentioned, we continue to remove material from our ditches where possible, and we've done quite a bit of that through the, you know, whenever the weather finally got to where it was cooperating a little bit, and we continue to do that. We were out yesterday doing that very, that very thing. So we are gonna continue working on that. Ordinarily, in this county, we rebuild about 18 to 20 miles of road, you know, two, two miles roughly in each blade district every year. This year, due to the weather, we got two and a half miles done. And that, and in those areas, that is when we rebuild the ditches and take care of those things. A lot of miles and a lot of, you know, what, 2,000 miles of ditches in this county that we have to maintain? So it takes quite a bit of work. Coming up, I will be presenting some requests to add some equipment that will help us do more of that in the coming weeks. I'm not ready to present that to you just yet, but we are thinking ahead and trying to create a system where we are being more proactive in our approach to road maintenance and ditching projects.
We're on commissioner comments.
Last Wednesday, we had our triennial Board of Health meeting, and again, I appreciate the leadership that we have in that department. I did attend the city commission meeting that morning also. They had several proclamations, a couple of resolution changes in their city ordinances, basically dealing with food trucks and the policies that are involved, and they did approve the agreement with their wildlife, Kansas Wildlife, so they can move the alley between 15th and 17th closer to the trail. And that's about all.
All right.
Oh, wait, we had the luncheon for the county, the city, and the school board, and that was really good. We had a good discussion on that.
No. Attended the same health thing and the launch of that.
And no meetings since we had our meeting over there with the school, and that's the last thing, and all you guys were there. It's probably general, like a lot of the things brought up was the education of our children, trying to train them in the right direction for the jobs that are needed, not that everybody has to go to college to, there's lots of those jobs. I just heard this morning that there's a lot of those jobs that the training that you can get in the BOAG and so forth and technical, that there's a lot of those jobs out there that aren't being filled, so that's all I have.
I went to ECAN board meeting last night, and they did reorganization, and the same officer's gonna remain as Officer Stephanie Coleman's gonna be the president. Couple things we discussed was ECAN's properties, they got 53 properties, and their property manager was there going over the policies on their rental model season, how that works. It was kind of interesting that the policy book's about, you know, 240 pages, actually long for all the rules and regulations as far as renting their properties, and so we went over a lot of that last night. Also, we had a financial update on their finances and, and working on their finances, and they have left Woodward Center, they were, Woodward Center, which is owned by the City of Ottawa, and they're going in with Elizabeth Layton Center out here on 15th Street, East 15th Street, to do, do the stuff they do, we're doing now at Woodward Center, so that's where I went last night.
All right. Our next meeting's one week from today. If there's nothing else, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Do we have Monday?
Have a retreat on Monday.
And what, we same place as always?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll notice it up just like a normal meeting, and yeah, we'll make sure all of you have the ECAN, probably get most of that to you today so that you have it. But yeah, we'll post notice of it on Friday, and we'll see y'all on Monday.
All right, good catch. Next time we'll be here is a week from today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, we're adjourned.